Okay, we're going.
Okay, well, everybody, please stand for the flag. Before we start, I'd like to thank Ransom Township officials for allowing us to be here today. Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Dennis Macheska, Supervisors David Baird Bird, sorry, and Alan Myers, Township Secretary Pat Myers, and Township Solicitor Ed Sakidi. Reading and approval of the minutes from the meeting held on November 3, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Anyone on agenda items? Okay. Friends of the Poor presentation, we have speakers, President and CEO of Friends of the Poor, Megan Loftus, and Director of Area Agency on Aging, Jason Kavulich. You want to go to the...
Good morning, everyone. We're here to present a donation to Friends of the Poor from Lackawanna County through the Area Agency on Aging. And the donation is more important than simply a donation for deliveries of home-delivered Thanksgiving dinners to seniors. It's an investment in combating senior isolation, and it's also an investment in making sure that we deal with the nutritional risks that our seniors face in Lackawanna County. So while, you know, it is a good time of year, it makes us all feel good that we're able to find the resources to invest in Friends of the Poor and the great work that they do for our community, it's also important to recognize there's a greater good being served here. Senior isolation costs the American people $6.7 billion in healthcare annually. Our investment here in Lackawanna County helps us identify individuals who are isolated through programs like Friends of the Poor and take steps to proactively combat it before they enter into a more serious medical condition. So with that, Megan Loftus, one of our very good partners and an individual who's helped us throughout the pandemic, make sure that food insecurity has been combated in Lackawanna County is here from Friends of the Poor.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. I want to start by saying thank you for the donation typically for our dinner. This is our 45th dinner. It actually predates our agency. It was one of Sister Adrienne's first missions in Scranton, and it started in 1976 with 24 people. Now we serve 3,500. Typically, individuals would come to the Scranton Cultural Center, sit and eat with us, and there would be music and a lot of community and camaraderie. And unfortunately, with the pandemic, we can't do that. Last year, we delivered about 900 and some meals to seniors living alone. This year, we're already at a request for 1,700 meals, and it's still climbing. So this donation is really going to help us make sure we can meet that and continue to have people just go and check on the seniors, make sure they're okay. And when our delivery drivers are dropping things off, they're also talking to the seniors and seeing what other resources they might need and what else we can do to help them, and just making sure they know which resources are available in the county. So I did bring, it's a full three-day event, starts with an interfaith prayer service, and then our Thanksgiving dinner is Tuesday, and our drive-through giveaway, which would be for families, it's all of the groceries and the makings of a Thanksgiving meal, is the next day. So if you guys don't mind, I would leave this at the door in case anyone is interested in coming or just sharing the information. And again, I really appreciate the support, and they're almost double the amount of people that we're serving this year thanks to your donation. So, thank you.
Members of the Board of Commissioners, do you have a question? Do you have a...
Oh, no, it's just...
Not many things, just very...
Let's just slide that chair out of the way. Let's move a little bit closer. It's still on your way. Move it right behind. That'd be good, right there.
Is it straight?
It is not.
Okay.
Now it is.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, here we are. Everybody look at me. Smile. Perfect.
Thank you very much. Okay, ordinance is first reading 21-0274. Ordinance number seven, or 274, first reading, annual budget for the county of Lackawanna for the year 2022.
An ordinance of the county of Lackawanna and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2022, and appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the county government herein after set forth during the current fiscal year, be it ordained and enacted. It is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, Section 1. That a tax be and the same is hereby levied on all property within the said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2022 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of 46.90 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 469 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of 13.20 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 132 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the county library system, the sum of 2.82 mils on each dollar of the assessed valuation, or the sum of 28.20 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the cultural and education fund, the sum of 1.0 mils, or the sum of 10 cents on each of one, each $100 of assessed valuation. Total mileage for all purposes is the sum of 63.92 mils. Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions, or parts thereof inconsistent herewith, are repealed. Madam Commissioner, that is the first reading of the budget for 2022. The second reading will be at our next meeting on November 1st.
Okay. Right, okay. Resolution 87, approving current payables.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve the following payables, Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 331400-332167, inclusive totaling Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $8,486,563.90. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Do I have a motion to approve the current payables?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0282, entering into an agreement with the Friends of the Poor.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into agreement with the Friends of the Poor on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging for congregant Thanksgiving meals in the amount not to exceed $10,000. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna, number 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Area of Aging Director, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Hey, Jason.
Good morning. Again, this is just to formalize the how we're going to transfer the funds to Friends of the Poor.
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0282?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 21-0283, entering into a memorandum of understanding.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Aging herein after, and the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging for the shared housing and resource and exchange to address the increasing need for affordable housing options for seniors and seniors with disabilities, with the potential to expand the program to individuals under the age of 60 with disabilities. The term of the MOU shall be July 1, 2021, through September 30, 2024, with an estimated budget for the shared program as administered through Lackawanna County totaling $342,704. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Kavulich.
This program, the Department of Aging approached Lackawanna County and asked us to please consider bringing it to the Northeast as a pilot for Lackawanna County and some of our surrounding communities. So our Area Agency on Aging accepted, and the funding that comes along with it. We're working with our partners to build this program in our community. What share is, is individuals, older adults, who need assistance in their home, welcome someone into their home that can help them with their bathing assistance, meal preparation, trash removal, like care around their home, in exchange for being able to live with the senior for no cost. This is completely funded by the Department of Aging. We're happy to be a pilot program, and we want to make sure that it's a success in our community, and we can grow it from here. We're going to start off small. We're going to partner with Neighbor Works and the Women's Resource Center to see if we can build a program model that will be sustainable in other communities as well.
I'm assuming you'll do extensive background checks on these people.
Correct. That is our hesitation initially into joining the program, but after the discussions with the Department of Aging, we have some assurance as a place that we can vet the individuals the way we feel is appropriate.
Any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0283?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
21-0284, entering into a consulting agreement.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the consulting agreement with Specialty Vehicle Services LLC to render consulting services with regard to specialty vehicle design and construction for the Lackawanna County Library System's bookmobile. And be it resolved that the Lackawanna County desires to reform or revise public outreach methods previously conducted by Lackawanna System Bookmobile following the onset of COVID-19, and include these new processes and any relevant and pertinent equipment as part of the design and final assembly of the specialized library outreach vehicle. And be it resolved that Lackawanna County desires Specialty Vehicle Services LLC to include best practices to assist in determining current outreach possibilities and requirements following the onset of COVID-19 with the American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist in responding to the ongoing repercussions left by COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents relating to this consulting agreement, and now therefore be it resolved, this 17th day of November 2021, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize entering into this consulting agreement with Specialty Vehicle Services LLC. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as a result of an RFP that we did in September of 2021, the resolution states that the county is entering into a consulting agreement with Specialty Vehicle Services LLC for the consulting services for the design and construction of a Lackawanna County bookmobile. These services totaling $19,100 will be paid for with American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist in responding to the ongoing repercussions by the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic has changed the way we look at learning, public outreach services, and much, much more, and we must be able to respond to these changes in order to best serve our residents. I have Mary Garm here, who is our Lackawanna, the administrator of our Lackawanna County library system, and she can talk a little bit more about our bookmobile and how important it is.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's lovely to see you all. I'd like to thank you for your support and interest in this project, especially Commissioner Dominic, who brought me in this summer to really begin talking about this idea. We, you may know that our current bookmobile was purchased in 2000, so that's a little more than two decades ago. We've experienced a number of issues over the last years, last few years, related to maintenance and repairs, but nothing really prepared us for what we were going to experience in March of 2020, when the pandemic hit. With social distancing restrictions and other kinds of safety regulations that relate to gatherings of people, we found that we could not provide the typical bookmobile service that we had been doing for many years. If you can picture the bookmobile, it's basically a bus with a center aisle and bookshelves lining both sides of the interior. We would bring groups of children, families onto the bookmobile throughout the county, and that was just not possible. So the bookmobile has been pretty much off the road for much of the pandemic. We are really interested in replacing that vehicle and looking for new ways to provide services in a post-pandemic, what we hope will someday be a post-pandemic world. But we are assuming that some of the restrictions that we are currently living with are things that are going to continue. So, so we have looked to, we're looking for services from a consultant who can help us explore the world of what bookmobiles today look like, a lot different from 20 years ago, what kind of services bookmobiles are currently offering, and we are recommending that we look at this proposal from Specialty Vehicle Services. They are a company that can take us from concept to design through manufacture and delivery of the vehicle. It's a skill set that nobody that we know of locally has, and so we think that this is our best opportunity to find a new bookmobile that is going to carry us into the next 10 to 15 years of outreach services in Lackawanna County.
So it might not be a bus?
Might not be a bus, yeah, yeah. And it might not be something that people come on to. It might be, you know, something that takes programs or collections of books to places throughout the county, whether it's preschools or senior centers, local parks in the summertime.
Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0284?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
21-0285, approving the submission of a CDBG modifications.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna hereby approve the submission of modifications of the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. For the fiscal, federal fiscal year 2017, the modification will delete the Elephant Borough Clearance and Demo Line item and transfer the fiscal year 2017 funds totaling $56,571 to the Public Facilities Line Item for the Elephant Borough Building ADA Ramp Project. For the federal fiscal year 2017, the modification will transfer from the Troup Borough Single Unit Housing Rehabilitation Line Item fiscal year 2017 funds totaling $51,287 to create the Recreation Facilities Line Item for the Troup Borough Washington Street Park ADA Improvements Project. And for the fiscal year 2017, the modification will transfer from the Jessup Borough Single Unit Housing Rehabilitation Line Item fiscal year 2017 funds totaling $54,209 to create the Public Facilities Line Item for the Jessup Borough Building ADA Restroom and Vestibule Door Project. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here once again is Director Sacco.
Hello again. This resolution states that the county is submitting CDBG modification requests for fiscal year 2017 on behalf of the borough of Jessup, Troup, and Elephant to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. These requests will allow for Jessup Borough Building ADA Restroom, Vestibule Door Project, the Troup Washington Street Park ADA Improvements Project, and the Elephant Borough Building ADA Ramp Project to be funded so that these projects may commence. The resolution is a requirement of our CDBG program, and it ensures that there's citizen participation in the use of the funds. Questions?
Hey, do I have a motion to approve 21-0285?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
21-0286, approving a maintenance agreement with Eastern Time.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a testing maintenance agreement with Eastern Time for a proprietary fire alarm system at the Trolley Museum, term to begin January 1, 2022, and expire on December 31, 2024. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Trolley Museum, Mr. Wayne Hiller.
Good morning, everyone. Basically, this is just a renewal of an existing agreement with Siemens Industries. It is for a three-year contract which extends to August 2024. Let me explain a little bit about Siemens here. Siemens is a computer automation system for the Trolley Museum. The Siemens computers oversee building and control systems, for example, heating and cooling controls, exhaust systems, lighting controls, and it also controls our security monitoring system, fire alarms, and intrusion panels. It'll be about a 3% increase, which I did submit in my 2022 budget. Anyone have any questions?
Do I have a mo... Do I have a motion to approve 21-0286?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
21-0288, entering into a purchase agreement with Harris Infocomp Corporation.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a purchase agreement with Harris Infocomp Corporation for application hosting and professional services for the register of Will's Office, Assessment Office, Sheriff's Office, Tax Claim Bureau, Jury Systems, and the Protonetary Clerk of Judicial Records Office, for a cost of professional services of $9,900 a year and annual housing hosting total $97,794.72. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 17, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our IT Director, Mr. Michael Brown.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This agreement with Harris, formerly known as Infocomp, was the group that was, all these different departments are actually using their services. So in order to help reduce costs, we're looking to remove the AS400 off of the county's budget and utilizing that cost savings to house these services on Harris, which actually will improve functionality for not just the departments, but also the citizens of Lackawanna County that actually access these resources off of our website.
Anyone have any questions for me?
Not at the moment.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0288?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Misses.
Opportunity for the public to address the board. Aye.
Good morning. My name is Josh Hoyt, and I have a question, you know, for, you know, the Commissioners. And before I ask the question, you know, please know that I think that every person in this room, you know, is a Pennsylvanian that is proud of this state and is interested in the best and, you know, the right thing to do. We had a lot of changes in the voting, and, you know, at the state level, and then also, you know, at, you know, the county level, one of which at the county level is drop boxes. And I am concerned, you know, about, you know, the ability of our organization to be able to keep that, you know, as a tight and honest and fair system. I would like to hear, you know, from the Commissioners as to what your opinions are on that, and, you know, how do we make our system better?
Our system actually works very well. We, they can, they can drop anything they want in the ballot box. We can't control that. They are monitored, but they can't get a ballot, and that's controlled by the voter registration office. Unfortunately, Beth isn't here today, but we were supervised, it's monitored continually during the course of election day. It's not like you can just take a piece of paper and say, I want to vote for this person. You have to have a ballot.
Right.
You have to be a registered voter to get the ballot. It's, it's, this is all nonsense with this, you know.
Well, I don't know. I could, I read what you're saying to me, but I also know that I have a deceased wife who received, you know, two ballots, you know, and she was no longer alive.
Did you vote them?
Did I post, no, I thought about, you know, actually, you know, voting three times, but I decided not to.
Okay. Well, again, I don't think they would have been counted, and it's, it's just...
So what you're telling me is that they're...
And you can have a conceivable difference time...
As I may, Commissioner, the mailed-out ballots that are returned through the drop boxes that you're referring to.
Right.
All have very specific requirements as far as signing off on the ballot and then signing another document, an envelope asserting that you are the person who signed the ballot and that you are the person who is assuring the issue of your ballot. We have access to the state voter database that allows our people, and granted, the people in Lackawanna County's voter reg office are not handwriting experts, but we are allowed to compare the writing on the ballot that comes in to the handwriting on the original documentation when the people registered to vote, or most recently changed their registration. So, while that's not 100% foolproof, and I realize that, it does essentially assure the county that the votes that are coming in are being made, or at least signed, by the persons who registered to vote.
Look, and let me comment too. I have the utmost respect for our voter registration office, Beth, Glenn, Adam, all of them. They do a great job. I am, I have no concerns when the ballots are in their hands. This, the drop boxes are a concern of mine. I don't, I just think it's an extra opportunity for people to, for voter fraud. Now, whether or not it's happening, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an expert on voter fraud, but it gives an opportunity for people to throw extra ballots in there potentially. The DA's doing an investigation now with, with video that I found. Yeah, there, these boxes are on security cameras, but nobody's watching the film. So without anybody watching them, we have no idea what's going on. So, you know, maybe down the road, we're going to have to get copies of all the video, and we're going to have to assign people to watch every minute of every video, and we'll see what goes on. But, you know, I, it just, it just opens up a little bit extra opportunity for the potential for voter fraud.
At this point, the ballot boxes are legal in Pennsylvania, and that's the reason we have them, and there have been multiple court cases concerned concerning voter fraud in the country, and they've all been refused and turned down. They've all come up, no. You know, again, can see, can someone conceivably do something wrong? Sure. Someone could conceivably come in here now and do something wrong, but it's, you know, it's really is awful, awful unlikely.
Well, the only thing that I know, it is, just in listening and in conversation with a lot of different people, is that there, there are questions in some people's minds. And I think that to, to, to cause people to have more, more confidence in, you know, the fact that things are right, I think, you know, that I'd like to see what the Commissioners, you know, are willing to do to, I guess, I guess, recapture the confidence for the public.
There are instructions posted, and then after the concern that was raised by Commissioner Schirmer, we did post a more concise, sometimes a long instruction in black and white isn't enough, so we put it on neon paper and made it very short and concise, only to place you a vote, your ballot in this box. We don't have total control over what the general public does. I mean, and we just don't know if it's feasible for us to have a sheriff at every election, like at every ballot box. It's not conceivable. I mean, we're, our sheriff's department is already stretched so thin from all the buildings that we have.
We were brought into a pandemic that none of us were ready for. Certainly was no guidebook for this. The election was coming upon us, and, you know, maybe the drop boxes at that point were going to be important, even though I still don't understand why we need a drop box, but whatever, we have them. Well, the pandemic, hopefully, we're getting towards the end of the pandemic. Hopefully, we're going to get back to some sort of normalcy. Hopefully, people will go to the polls and vote in person. So in the road, I'm hoping we can eliminate one option. We can eliminate the drop boxes. They can still mail in a ballot if there's mail-in ballots. They can mail in their absentees, or they can vote in person. Their other option is you can always go to the county building and go to the voter registration and turn in your ballot, and then there's no mistake. You can only hand in your own. They're not going to take multiple ballots. They're not going to take your PP&amp;L bill if you accidentally threw it in there. So, you know, so hopefully down the road, we can address the drop.
And just one more thing, there is a log sheet kept by, that's my understanding, right? By Beth Hopkins of everything that's obtained from each drop box. By Beth Hopkins of everything that's obtained from each drop box. She keeps track of everything that was in there. So I do think that there are safeguards, but.
And can I just add to the gentleman's question? And they're very good questions, and look, I think there's good points made on both sides. Relative to the drop boxes themselves, when you talk about, you know, if there is any lack of confidence, I think what I would point out to folks primarily, what I do is, I, I, I think we could reasonably argue that the drop boxes are almost even more secure than, say, our post office boxes or our US mailboxes when we're talking absentee ballots, because of course, at least the six drop boxes we have are video recorded, and we can look at those if an instance comes up, such as Commissioner Schirmack did at one of our meetings, where with our post office or with our US mailboxes, which of course are all over the county, anyone can go to any of those, none of those are recorded and can put in whatever they want. So, you know, I think in any instance, the Commissioner Natariani's point, if someone wants to do something that's wrong or insidious, they're going to do that or try to do that, but we try to put the best safeguards we can in place, and I think the video recording offers an additional safeguard that we really don't see anywhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you go to the microphone, please? It's easier for.
I'd like to alert, I'm Robert Connor. I'm, I live in Ransum, not far up the road, on Creek Road. I want to alert the county to a existing hazardous situation that's not been addressed by anyone. I spoke to the township supervisors, they said they don't have any money, so they're not going to do anything. That little stream.
I mean, when I talked to you yesterday.
Yes, you did. Appreciate that.
And then you did talk to someone.
Oh, oh, I spoke with many, multiple people.
It was yesterday.
Yeah, that, well, I spoke a month ago.
I want to set that straight.
Three years ago, I brought it up between, at the township meeting, but not with the county. Not with the county, I just brought it up. It's in regards to that small stream that's running up the road on Creek, along Creek Road. Right now, that stream, if you look at it, you say, what's the problem? What it is, is there are numerous trees that are falling across that stream, upstream, not down here, further up. And as soon as there's a, a gully washer, say, you know, four-inch rain in a short period, it goes crazy. Here's, I have an example of what, what it looks like during one of those periods. This, this is that little, little, that extreme. When we get a rain, a heavy rainstorm, it goes crazy. Right now, we have numerous trees across that stream that's going to cause a log jam to build up, and all of a sudden, that wall of water is going to let loose, and we're going to have a major flood. It's happened before, it washed that stream that rolled out, and it's going to happen only in a much worse situation because there are more, more trees. There's a pinch point. It's marked up the road with orange marker on the guardrails. If you have a chance to stop on the way up, get out of your car, look over the bank, the guardrails are hanging, the supports for the guardrail are already hanging down, so something needs to be done by somebody. I'm not saying it's the county alone, but it's, someone, and I already said I would take part in fixing this problem.
I'm not discounting your concerns.
Okay.
Again, I was made aware of it yesterday. I spoke with you yesterday.
Right.
I talked to our Roads and Bridges Director yesterday. He was going to contact you, but I don't know if he did or not.
Not yet.
Okay. And again, he just got back from where he was, and he, but I'm sure he will.
All right, well.
And we'll go forward from there.
Is that a state road or a county? What is that?
It's a state road, two zero zero three.
Yeah, but I, you know, again.
And there is a meeting. A meeting tomorrow.
It's not like we're discounting your concerns. I agree with you. That's, that's interesting.
Something should be done by someone, and I appreciate your, your consideration on this, and hopefully with your help, maybe something will be done. You know, this is the first positive response that I've gotten.
I'm glad.
So I did speak with Representative Cartwright. I spoke with Kozarowski's office. I spoke with the DER, the EPA.
Senator Flynn's.
Numerous, numerous.
Here now, his.
Numerous agencies.
I'm sure he'll take some information from you.
Okay.
Senator Flynn will be glad to get involved in this conversation.
We have a meeting tomorrow scheduled with the DOT, Department of Transportation. Their engineers are going to look at the road, which is going to fall into.
And only going to get worse.
The stream. Right. So hopefully, you know, by alerting this problem to you and others, something will get. Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian will talk to you, right, Brian?
Anyone else from the public? Going once. Okay, Commissioners, other business. Jerry?
Um, so earlier in the meeting, we talked about the budget. Just want everybody in the public here, you know, to, you know, to pay attention and be aware that our twenty twenty-two budget is going to be faced with an eight-point-eight million dollar deficit.
Seven and a half. Was it seven and a half?
The official budget hasn't changed from the tentative budget yet.
So it's still.
So, I mean, it's a work in process, and we believe that we brought the deficit down by reducing health insurance, and there's some other changes, but we're still expecting to make further changes, and we'll have the final number by the December first meeting when we do the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, well, I'll be waiting for those, but, you know, I just want everybody to be aware of what's going on. And Tom, I've, I've requested a meeting with Tom, he's been a little too busy to get with me yet, but hopefully before too long, we can. You know, we're looking at multiple increases in different areas, million dollars at the prison, eight percent, eighteen percent in the sheriff's department, fifty percent in the increase in the assessors office, several million in IT. It goes on and on. So, you know, at that rate, and I'm telling you, and I'm a taxpayer too, we are going to be faced, and this is on record, we're going to be faced with one of the largest tax increases this county's ever seen if we continue down this path. So now is the time to make cuts and look at the budget and fix the problem now. It's, it's going to get worse. It's a snowball rolling downhill, and that's where we are. So just want everybody to just pay attention.
Hi, myself, I've been going, Deputy Chief of Staff here, Tracy Hart, and I, both together, tirelessly going through the budget, and I mean line item for line item. I've asked the Revenue Department, Mary Jo, our Director of Budget, Budget Director, she's been, I asked her for information going back to two thousand and eighteen, just so I could see where businesses were or departments were before COVID. We are taking a very close, close look at it. I am more than willing to look at anything that you'd like to discuss, or if you want to come and sit with us and do it. The prison, we decreased costs by eliminating a vendor, we renegotiated a contract which should bring in about a hundred or one-point-five million dollars in revenue. So there are things happening. So as Tom Durkin said, the final numbers aren't here now, but I remember you had a budget task force or something. I'm all ears for recommendations and suggestions. I do agree that we need to cut some fat from the county budget, but there's only certain things that.
Somewhere, where it's going to end up is somewhere between six and seven percent cut average across the board.
I mean, we can't just cut wages across the board. We have seven unions we have to deal with.
But I think we can find seven or eight million dollars in a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and fifty million dollar budget. That's.
And again, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Chris, but at the same time, anyone can point out problems, you have to come up with solutions. I'm in my office, if you can't even.
That's up to the directors. We have directors that run every department. When I, but are you a financial expert? No, you are not.
But I'm a commissioner.
We have people that, good for you. So am I. I'm not a financial expert, but I ran my own business, and I can tell you what, when I lost our two franchises, you think our budget stayed the same? Absolutely not. We had to make adjustments that you, you couldn't even think of. So there are things we can do. I don't want to hear excuses. We have an eight million dollar deficit that's going to go into the taxpayer's pocket. I don't want to hear excuses.
I'm not saying there is an excuse. I'm saying as Commissioners, we have the obligation to look.
To balance the budget.
To look at the budget and to try to make cuts when directors don't want to. I mean, when things go a certain way.
Too bad, then we need new directors.
And some people just don't realize that they can make it work on less.
I am not going to pass a budget with a deficit. It doesn't, it's not going to happen.
And complain about, and yet say that it's not our responsibility to do anything to try to reduce it, but to place it on the directors.
I want to see how good you are. You got, you got another one.
I'm doing something. What are you doing other than?
I'm a minority commissioner. I'm doing the best I can as a minority commissioner.
You visit departments and you complain about problems. You don't actually enter or give us any solutions. So why don't you come into my office and sit down with me and help me figure it out, or just be quiet and stop pointing out the obvious?
All right, well, we'll see how you do.
I'll be doing a lot more than you. Anyone else? For the love of God, anyone? I'll take a motion.
That was sort of a nasty exchange.
You think?
Rather than sit down and try to work out a solution and keep the budget in line so we don't have to pay more taxes, you know, we're senior citizens, nine eighty-three, my wife's eighty, and we keep paying taxes and taxes. We got another eight hundred dollar tax we have to send out the end of this month, and it comes out of our savings, and I'm not working, I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. And I wish you guys would figure out a way to cut expenses so at least we could live a livable life without going into a nursing home and paying more money.
I agree. I agree. But I did not vote, I did not move.
I understand. Do something about it.
I did not vote for taxes the first time around.
Don't sit up there and shoot your arse back for it. Do something positive.
That's what I'm saying. I am doing something. And I didn't raise taxes the first time around, he did.
Okay. Make sure you don't raise them.
Do I have a second?
This is gentlemen.
Okay, go ahead. Do you want to come up here? They can't. It's for the camera.
Tom Kneller, Scranton, Pennsylvania. You mentioned that you've been tirelessly going through all the line items, so what have, what have you come up with?
Well, I mean, I don't laugh, like, laugh at you. I mean, it's, it's a very large budget, so I'm still going through it. I do believe that there are expenses to be cut. So I've been in touch with the directors, trying to see what is what, and trying to see where we can, where we can cut money. We've also, like I said, with the prison, we're generating money through a new contract. We are eliminating expenses. I met with Ms. Sacco about her department doing certain things. So the way it works is I'm, I'd say maybe three-quarters through it, and then I would sit down with either or both of the Commissioners to go through it and with the revenue to see what, you know, what they think about the cuts that I've made or that I recommend or that I see are viable, and then it would take two Commissioners to approve the changes.
Gotcha. So do you think you're going to be able to get to the six or seven percent?
I, I, whether or not we can, again, like as Tom said, right now it's eight-point-eight million dollar deficit, it, it, maybe less, it's a working, it's a, it's a working number. I, I don't know how far we're going to be able to get. It really is, it's difficult. I mean, when you try to cut within.
I'm just, I'm just curious, like, where you are and your confidence.
And that's why I've been trying to get estimates and budgets from, from before the COVID, before COVID, because looking at the COVID years, it's hard to really estimate what a department needs in certain things because a lot of the stuff was, was shut down, such as trials and things of that nature, juries. So I've been looking before COVID, but I will say that it's hard, when, when departments are used to running on a certain budget, you do get a lot of pushback. So we do our best. We're, we're, we're trying to go through it and, and reduce it.
You're not arguing you're not doing your best.
Yeah, whether or not, I mean.
And your confidence.
Am I hopeful that we can eliminate seven million dollars? Not going to lie, you're probably not, but I'm going to try to get as much as I can. I, I'm not for raising taxes like that, I can tell you that.
I know, but that seems like that's always the go-to.
You're right.
It's always the go-to. We heard that the gas tax was supposed to pay for the roads. I don't know what happened to that. The fees you pay to use the turnpike are supposed to take care of that, that doesn't happen. Now we're talking about adding five dollars to the registration of our vehicles. All right, it's only five bucks, but then next year, what is it? Is it another five? Is it just growing?
You have to generate revenue or, or cut taxes. When we generate revenue, we get pushed back. When we try to cut taxes, we get internal pushback. So I agree. I, I, I think that raising taxes is the easy way out, and I'm not for that. I, I, I think that we really need to do some serious cutting, but unfortunately, not everybody is open to making waves in, in that regard. I, I don't have a problem doing it.
Thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
Madam Commissioner, very quickly, I don't know where this narrative came from, but this budget does not raise taxes this year.
I know.
That wasn't said.
I think they're saying they're worried about moving forward.
I, I'm talking about the debate that was going on about who gets cut where. The fact of the matter is, is that this budget is not raising taxes on residents of Lockawana County.
That is true, but we have a deficit, so we do need to make cuts. I do believe that. That's my opinion. All right, motion for adjournment? Second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Connor. Mr. Connor.
Could you give Ryan your information? I just want your information.